Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District 1, Harry Cohen. Representing District 2, Ken Hagan. Representing District 3, Gwen Myers. Representing District 4, Stacy White. Representing District 5, Mariella Smith. Representing District 6, Pat Kemp. Representing District 7, Kimberly Oberman. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue, so we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Board Meeting on August 17th at 9:00 a.m. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and given that we're all present today, we don't necessarily need to do a roll call. But first, we're going to begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation by our chaplain, Commissioner White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll ask that everyone please rise at this time. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions for this county this morning. Father, I am thankful for this live audience here today as we continue on a path towards normalcy and put this pandemic behind us. And as always, I pray for our first responders and members of our armed forces. Pray that you'll guide them and keep them safe each and every day. I give these thanks and ask for these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White. I appreciate that. With that, we will... We don't have any special recognitions or proclamations today. I guess all of us have been a little busy because normally we're fighting over space, so we're not doing that today. So I'll recognize Ms. Wise.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first item is an off-the-agenda item by Commissioner Hagan. This is Item F1. This is direct staff to reexamine all permits and applications relating to the Taylor Morrison housing development on Patterson Road in Keystone, and furthermore, implement all enforcement measures, including the issuance of a stop-work order. We have several items for time certain. The first item is Item B2 at 9:30. This is to approve the first modification to the Tampa Bay Passenger Ferry's second interim public-private partnership agreement by and between Hillsborough County, HMS Ferries, and Southswell Development Group, LLC. This is related to Item E1. Then, Item E1, also at 9:30, related to Item B2, is to receive an appearance by Kim Lee Horn and Associates to provide an update on the South County McDill Air Force Base Commuter Ferry project. Item B3 at 9:45 is to approve the declaration and renaming of Temple Park as the Peppin Family Park. Item D1 at 10:00 a.m. is to conduct the first of two required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement with the School Board of Hillsborough County and EPG Ruskin LLC to allow the proposed Sherwood 4C and 5AC project to satisfy school concurrency. Item D2 at 10:00 is to conduct the first of two required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement with the School Board of Hillsborough County and Spencer Farms, Inc., to allow the proposed Sherwood 4A and 4B project to satisfy school concurrency. And finally, Item G3 at 10:00, conduct the first of two required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement with the School Board of Hillsborough County and SM Ruskin Development LLC to allow proposed Sherwood 3C project to satisfy school concurrency. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Great, thank you very much. We have a motion to approve the changes by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Myers. Please indicate your vote. I know. It's like, okay. I didn't... We're not doing roll calls. We actually use the toy.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We are going to move to the section of our meeting that allows for public comment. The good news is, we have several individuals that are signed up to speak today, and we have three public hearings. And those individuals that signed up to speak for a public hearing will be called on at that time. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern, and your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members. It is requested, at the same time when you address the Board, that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or staff member, but rather at the issues. This provides a mutual respect between the Board members and the public, and the Board is set aside 45 minutes, period, in the morning, immediately following the changes of the agenda, for a public comment. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may again hear a public comment at the end of the meeting in the event that there's not sufficient time in that 45-minute period. Anyone who wishes to speak virtually or in person during the meeting may do so by completing the public comment form at hcflgov.net/speakup. The form is open for public sign-up 48 hours prior to the start of the meeting, and an option is available to notify whether comments will be provided virtually or in person at the meeting. In addition to that, onsite here at County Center, you're able to sign up in person at the kiosk downstairs or by smartphone on the day of the meeting prior to 9:00. For participants who wish to speak virtually, who have completed the form, an online audio call-in number will be provided after the form is received by the county. All speakers are required to provide only their name, an email address, and telephone number on the online form. This information is being requested to facilitate the public comment process. And sign-ups are both virtual or in-person. Public speaking opportunities for public hearings will close at 9:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting. I'll call on speakers in the order of which they were received on a first-come, first-served basis, and the boardroom is available to those that wish to speak. Only the first 35 in-person sign-ups will be allowed in the boardroom for public comment. Face coverings are strongly encouraged in the boardroom, although not required. CDC guidance strongly recommends that unvaccinated people and those with weakened immune systems continue to wear masks to protect themselves and others. Those who come to the County Center to watch the meeting and not speak will be accommodated in the lobby area. And speakers are asked to please exit the boardroom at the conclusion of public comment. All virtual speakers will be muted upon joining the meeting and will be unmuted after being recognized by the Chair. And three minutes is allowed for each speaker. And with that, we'll move to those that have signed up to speak. We have several people here in person that are willing to offer some public comment. And the first one that's signed up is Elizabeth White. She's speaking on Item F1.
My name is Elizabeth White. My address is 17905 Burrell Road, Odessa. I've been a resident of the Keystone community for 26 years. In January of this year, stakes were driven in the ground, a blue ditch which appeared, and trees were marked with pink tape on this property. Immediately following this, the bulldozers and other construction machinery showed up, and the trees, including grand oaks, were cut down and buried, and the land alternation began. Unpermitted construction went on for well over three months until a stop-work order was issued on 4/26/22. The actual site permit was issued May 5, 2022. Public Works addresses normal working hours and noise control Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m. The temporary traffic control permit dated 7/18/22 has approved hours of 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., seven days a week. Sunday, August 7, at 10:40 p.m., there was active construction on this site, and the following morning, construction began at 7:30 a.m. The gopher tortoise permit was issued by the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission on December 29, 2021. This permit was received by Taylor Morrison after submitting a conditional site development approval on December 17, 2021. The permit clearly states in Section 5, "Gopher Tortoise Capture and Relocation Activities May Be Conducted Only If Written Government Approvals Have Been obtained for Land Clearing, Grading, or Construction Activities Prior to Commencing Relocation." The first gopher tortoise captured was February 18, 2022. Taylor Morrison did not have a site permit until May 5, 2022. The environmental resource permit was applied for on 7/26/2021. The permitting was double-screened. When the permit was issued on 3/25/22, Taylor Morrison was the owner of the property. If a property changes hands, a modification is required on the permit. This did not happen. An ERP is required before beginning any construction activity. Taylor Morrison began unpermitted construction activity on this property prior to 3/25/22. Per Florida Statute 713.13, notice of commencement must be filed before work starts on the property. The filing has to be within 90 days of when the project begins. Taylor Morrison's notice of commencement was recorded in Hillsborough County Circuit Court on 5/19/22. Unpermitted construction activities on this property began January of 2022. Taylor Morrison continues to not comply with permits, procedures, local laws, and state laws. I support the Board of Hillsborough County Commissioners in shutting down this site. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker is Melissa Norbeck.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have a big problem in Keystone, Odessa. We have a 200-acre property that we thought was purchased through the ELAP program that has now been sold to a developer, Taylor Morrison. In 2019, this property was designated as a top priority for acquisition due to its environmental importance. Now, in 2022, all 200 acres have been cleared in order to build 194 homes on 10,000-square-foot lots. Taylor Morrison is advancing this project based on a 1991 zoning. They contend the 1991 zoning allows them to move forward without public notice, without a land use hearing, and without Board of County Commissioners' input or approval. The legality of this development is now the subject of a lawsuit, and that is not what I want to speak to today. I want you to use your authority to revoke permits and issue a stop-work order for this development based on the following violations. Work begins at dawn. They are not legally allowed to work until 7:30 a.m., so the backup safety beepers on the large construction equipment are silenced until 7:30, an OSHA violation. Once residents started reporting this activity to OSHA, gigantic piles of dirt were staged to block the view of residents. This is called stockpiling, which requires a permit that Taylor Morrison does not have. Work continues on Saturdays and holidays, another violation. Unpermitted tree removal resulted in a $310,000 fine from Natural Resources, one of the largest fines issued by the county this year. Taylor Morrison is now uprooting trees and replanting them improperly according to an onsite visit last week from Natural Resources. These trees are already showing signs of distress that will result in additional fines. As Beth mentioned, violation of Condition Number 5 of the gopher tortoise relocation permit. As Beth also mentioned, Taylor Morrison denied the night permits by the county. On Sunday, they were caught digging in the right-of-way at 10:30 p.m. The development order wasn't signed until May 5, yet they began work in January, February of 2022, a full three months before permits were officially issued. Taylor Morrison has shown arrogance and disdain for the rule of law and the policies and procedures implemented by Hillsborough County. They've had three extra months to work on this site to put them ahead of schedule. Use your authority to issue a stop-work order for permit violations. Until the emergency order is heard by Judge Wolfe, he will announce the hearing date on August 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, also speaking on F1, is Janine Holton.
Hi, I'm Janie Holton-Caryfall, 16318 McGlamery Road, and I own two acres on Lake Echo, which joins Lake Church. My property used to be a spiritual community in the '70s, and it's where I met my first husband in a canoe on the lake. One of the houses on my property was built by the McGlamery family in the late 1800s, and they lived there in the early 1900s. In April 2020, a Tampa Bay Times article was published lauding the ELAP purchase of 542 acres in Keystone. We all cheered. County Commissioners were quoted in the article stating the purchase of this land was, quote, "essential because of the property's environmental importance." However, something went terribly wrong. This past February 2022, the bulldozers showed up. This was Keystone's first indication that something went wrong with the ELAP purchase. During COVID, Taylor Morrison was busy doing traffic studies—there was very little traffic then—and wildlife studies. Seems all the wildlife had flown the coop, according to their report. Sensitive land and species within the Brooker Creek watershed were being sacrificed for another high-priced housing development on little lots, seven and a half feet apart, abutting very near five to eight environmentally sensitive lakes. This is our history. This is our source of water caps. This is precious wildlife and an environment that matters. I pay a lot of money to have an excellent well. It's fed by spring water, and it's got an air filtration system. I love my water. It's well water, and I want to keep it. I've already invested a lot in it. I don't want the source of my well water, the spring-fed lakes, ruined or impacted negatively in any way. I do not trust the developer to have the best interest of Hillsborough County or Keystone residents in mind. I have personally observed deer, gopher tortoises, and many snakes disoriented and crossing McGlamery Road trying to figure out where to go. Taylor Morrison said that they relocated the turtles, but they did not get many of them, and they did cover up their holes, so it's kind of hard to see where they're supposed to be. I'm really worried about the water. Please be forward-thinking about this. Please order a stop-work order until a judge can review the plans and Taylor Morrison can prove that it will get the proper permits and that it can live within the laws of Hillsborough County. There have been almost daily infractions. Please enforce the Hillsborough County Land Development Code and make sure that everything is done properly. It seems that they are in a big rush to get this thing done before we can scrutinize their plans and the impacts. They'll ask for forgiveness afterwards. Please direct your staff to follow the Hillsborough County codes and not to defer to the developer.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you for being here. The next speaker is Mark Carifall.
Good morning. My name is Mark Carifall. I live at 16318 McGlamery Road in Odessa, and I just want to add my voice to the concerned citizens of the Keystone neighborhood. We're concerned about the quality of the water, and we're concerned about traffic, which may become extremely congested if all these homes and all these citizens move into the area, and the quality of life for the neighborhood will definitely deteriorate. I would like to know if we can have... The inspection of the property could be done by residents of the neighborhood who are negatively impacted by this construction, and we would like to have a voice in mitigating the negative aspects of this construction. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Gregory... I'm going to mess this up. Jelion, I believe, who is attending virtually?
Madam, Gregory has not signed into the meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next in-person speaker is Ward Netcher.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Ward Netcher, lifelong resident of Keystone. I reside at 18421 Gunn Highway. I've heard a lot of bad things about this Taylor Morrison project, but that is hearsay. Like the large oak trees that have been recently transplanted, everybody knows, except for them probably, successful transplanting of large trees is best done in the winter. These trees are just going to die. They've already killed a bunch of them, just dumping them over. But anyway, I'm here to testify to what I've actually seen myself. On August 8, before 8:00 a.m., I witnessed firsthand heavy equipment being operated by BP Construction Group, subcontractors of Taylor Morrison. I stopped, and I pointed out to the operator that he could not be legally operating before 9:00 a.m. Shortly after, another BP employee arrived and told me that they were not working yet, lied right to my face. I have pictures and video of the equipment operating at 8:06 a.m., August 8, 2022. This is after they've been caught working after hours. They just don't stop. They have no respect whatsoever for the Hillsborough County laws or our community. Please stop these destructive, lying companies immediately. If Commissioner Jan Platt, God rest her soul, was still here, this would have never gotten this far. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker that's attending virtually is Janice Mansong-Hing.
Honorable Commissioners, my name is Janice Mansong-Hing. My husband and I retired five years ago as law enforcement officers, myself as a senior police detective corporal. We reside peacefully at 16740 Worley Road Loop on a small horse ranch, which is in the Keystone District and community. I presently serve the people and the community of Keystone as Vice President, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the Keystone community. Honorable Commissioners, it comes to our community's complete attention that the project on Patterson Road has been operating outside the permits, and I can tell you, as a former police detective, unfamiliar with permits, and that is a blatant disregard for the permit process and its requirements. This is unfortunately not a new issue. It's been ongoing since day one, as the previous speakers have all stated. This county has rules, permits in place to safeguard the health, the wellness, and the safety of our surrounding neighbors, and it is imperative that this developer should comply with these requirements and these permits and uphold the conditions of these permits set forth by our county. Thank you, Honorable Commissioner Hagan and the County Commissioners for looking into this matter. We support and appreciate you.
Thank you. Our next virtual speaker is Mike Atherton.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mike Atherton. I live at 17859 Boy Scout Road in Keystone, Odessa. I am asking that you either revoke or suspend the Taylor Morrison permit for the Patterson McGlamery Road development. They have violated numerous permits, including cutting down trees without proper permits, removing gopher tortoises without the proper permit, along with numerous other permit violations. The whole project does not fit into our area as it brings too much density, too much traffic, and many other issues that our infrastructure cannot handle. Under Florida Statute 163.3235, you have the right to revoke or suspend these permits. Please revoke them. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cassandra Leonard.
Yes, hello. Good day, Chairman. And I live on Tarpon Springs Road in Odessa, Florida. I am a 53-year resident, having grown up in the Odessa Keystone community, and seen our small growth of beautiful homes that have been built on two and a half acres, five acres and so forth, and some small developments that have followed rules and regulations as per what the county has instated. I am requesting for this committee to please use your authority to issue a stop-work order and also a full investigation on all the elements of this permitting process that was completed for this Taylor Morrison project on Patterson Road, because as we have all witnessed in driving in the area and watching this happen, literally overnight, beginning in January, we know in our research and time that these individuals have not followed any regulations that are installed by the county and rules to protect our environment. Both sides, the environmental side as well as the county side, have failed us, in my opinion, in this community. And they have failed the wildlife. They have also failed in protecting the environment and our watersheds. And for this, I do request that a full investigation is completed and that their current permitting is revoked until all this is... until they comply to what you, the county, have provided on regulatory laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is in-person Tara Murphy. Is Tara Murphy here? Hey, fine.
Good morning, everyone. As you've heard, I won't rehash all the violations again, but as a citizen and a resident of Keystone, I live one road over from Patterson on Infield Drive. As you've heard, there's been multiple violations, and the part that is concerning for me as a Keystone resident is all of these violations have been brought to light by Keystone citizens. It feels like the company is just working with the definition of fines being legal for a price. Nothing seems to stop their forward progression of just, you know, these violations. We feel like, as citizens, we have to police this site, and that really makes us feel like we're on our own. And so, like my fellow residents, I would really like to request that you use your authority to issue a stop order for these violations until the emergency order is heard before Judge Wolfe on August 23rd. That is my request, and I thank you very much for listening to us, and we do have faith in you that you will do the right thing, and so thank you very, very much.
Thank you. The next person that signed up to speak is Amy Turinos, who's in-person speaking on A10, which is our consent item. Is Amy available? Is she available online, maybe?
Madam Chair, Amy is not online.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. And I don't see Amy arriving at the moment, so we'll move on to the next speaker. That is Kim Paulson.
Good morning, Commissioners. After the battle we had a couple years ago on Patterson Road, we were so grateful for the progress we thought we had made, getting that turned into an ELAP-protected place. We breathed... we were breathing an enormous sigh of relief. I wasn't planning to speak today, but I felt that I kind of needed to. The sense of betrayal that we feel is overwhelming. Taylor Morrison has been allowed to proceed without any public comment, without even consulting you guys, just kind of under the radar during the pandemic. I mean, the cat's out of the bag. There's apparently nothing we can do about it, according to everyone here. Things are done. It's over. I have a lot of concerns about what's going to happen in the future, how you guys are going to have some sort of awareness of what's going on out there and to stop this from being the new norm, where these size developments are allowed to go on just, you know, anyway. So I don't have any real prepared statement, but I would urge you all to go to protectkeystone.com and look through that website and the aerial photographs and the other things that the citizens have put together to try to stop or to make aware... citizens have put together to try to stop or to make aware what's going on out there. We are begging that you at least issue a stop order and please look into the environmental impacts that are ongoing right now. I ride my bike a lot through Brooker Creek and up and down the New Starkey Gap Trail and all of that area, and it's such a relief to be there and not have houses everywhere. The amount of tortoises I am seeing right now is remarkable. I'm like, wow! And I think about that development backing up to Brooker Creek, all the destruction that's already been gone on. You know, they say, oh, they're going to replace the trees. Well, we know that's not true. They're putting little things into a tree bank somewhere. Those trees will never be replaced in our lifetime. These grand oaks, older than all of us, destroyed in a matter of weeks, months. They're gone. They'll never be back, and we're going to end up with another Chaka Block subdivision butting up against our beautiful Keystone neighborhood and piercing our Keystone community plan that has been the bedrock of our neighborhood.
Thank you.
I thank you, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Paulson. And the last speaker signed up on this item prior to the public hearings, that individuals have signed up for a public hearing, is Brian Murphy, who's also in person. Mr. Murphy?
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for your time. My name is Brian Murphy.
Sir, can you lift your mic a little bit, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for your time. My name is Brian Murphy. I live at Infields Drive, Keystone, Florida. It's directly south of Patterson Road. There's a, with Patterson and Infields Drive and Race Track Road are, it's, there's a curve there, and we're a rural community where we have horses, livestock, and it's becoming increasingly, the ability to safely travel and leave my road to get onto Race Track Road is becoming increasingly unsafe. We have 30-foot horse trailers. They're attached to our pickup trucks, and the increased construction with the utilities and the Taylor Morrison community, it's just making it unsafe for the horse, us trying to travel with our horse trailers. It's not safe, and this construction is the reason for it. So I would like you to just take that into consideration when thinking of what Taylor Morrison is doing on Patterson Road and how it's affecting the rural lifestyle that we've had and would like to maintain. It's just very difficult. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That is the end of our public comment period for those that signed up to speak on general issues, specifically F1. As I indicated earlier, those that are done speaking are asked to watch the meeting, possibly down in the lobby area, but if you've already spoken, you're asked to leave the boardroom at this time. And Ms. Wise?
Thank you. Approval of consent agenda.
Oh, right.
So moved.
We have a motion, anyway, a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Myers. With that, please indicate your vote. Okay. And do we need to address F1, or it's just now that we've already spoken and made the changes that we acknowledge that it's there, it doesn't need special approval?
Right. We'll get to it after our time certains.
Okay, great. Now, Ms. Wise.
Thank you. Our first-time certain item is Item B2. This is to approve the first modification to the Tampa Bay Passenger Ferry Second Interim Public-Privet Partnership Agreement between the county and HMS Ferries and Southswell Development Group, and Tom Fass is going to present this item. This is related to Item E1, which will come after that, which is a presentation by Kim Lee Horn.
Excellent.
First, Tom Fass.
Yes. Mr. Fass, you're recognized.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much. Tom Fass, Special Projects. This item is requesting approval of the first modification to the Tampa Bay Passenger Ferry Second Interim Public-Privet Partnership Agreement, buy-in between Hillsborough County, HMS Ferries, and Southswell Development Group. This modification will allow Kim Lee Horn to continue their engineering effort in support of the commuter ferry project without any pause waiting on FY23 funding. This is a multi-year effort, and staff is requesting $252,000,062 allocated in FY23 to be reallocated to FY22. The overall project cost will remain as originally approved by the board. We also made some revisions to Exhibit B of the agreement clarifying the scope of vessel design to preliminary design and conforming the timing of requests for payment provision. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Additionally, as Bonnie mentioned, after you vote on this item, we have a companion item where Kim Lee Horn will provide a short update on the commuter ferry project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fass, with that, open up a board discussion. We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I actually just hit that to move approval, but I'd like to see this robustly move through, and we're doing well here.
Excellent. We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Smith. Please indicate your vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to be consistent with my comments regarding this project. I fully support the intercity ferry service. However, I firmly believe this commuter ferry is not a transit project, and it will be a financial boondoggle that will remove very few vehicles from the road. So I'm going to, consistent with previous votes, I'll be voting against it.
Thank you. Any other comments? With that, please indicate your vote.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioner Hagan and White voted no.
Excellent. Ms. Wise?
And thank you. The next item is Item E1. This is to receive an appearance by Kim Lee Horn, and they're going to provide an update on the South County-McDill Air Force Base Commuter Ferry Project, and Tom Fass will introduce our representatives from Kim Lee Horn. In addition, Ed Turancheck is available if the board has any questions.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Fass, you're recognized.
Well, good morning again, Commissioners. We have Dawn Dodge here from Kim Lee Horn, and she is going to present on the great work that Kim Lee Horn has been doing. I'd just like to say the project is moving forward. We're having a lot of success. Kim Lee Horn's doing a great job, and McDill Air Force Base is working extremely well with us to help us advance this project, along with Mosaic. So this will be a good report. Dawn?
Thanks, Tom. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. And as he mentioned, I'm Dawn Dodge. I am the project lead for Kim Lee Horn. We're the design and engineering firm that's been retained by the project developer of the Tampa Bay Ferry Public-Privet Partnership. Here with us today on the call is Rob Hart, Principal of Southswell Development Group, as well as Matt Miller, President of HMS Ferries, and as mentioned, Ed Turancheck, who is all available after the end of my short presentation. So as Tom said, and thank you for the vote, you know, the project, I'm happy to report that the project is on schedule, on budget, and in fact, you know, we are moving quicker than anticipated. So I believe that is all positive news. So I'm going to start off with just giving a quick overview for the public. So the current intercity service, the service from downtown Tampa to downtown St. Pete, has been very successful, record ridership just recently, and, you know, in fact, so successful that, you know, we, the community was awarded a federal grant for nearly $5 million to acquire a 350-passenger vessel. So that was recent good news, and so that will come into play into all services. So specifically, the service that we're working on now is the commuter service, which will be a new terminal in South Hillsborough County at the Mosaic site, which will operate during commuter hours, and then on off-heek hours, we'll go between downtown Tampa and St. Pete, as well as South County. Late last year, in December, we did a new ridership survey. We worked with the Air Force Base to get an updated survey. We had over 1,000 employee response, responses, which is 30, over 30% higher response than we had gotten previously, so very positive feedback there. Key findings of the surveys, the results, 94% commute by car today, 85% of commutes greater than 40, with 50 having commutes greater than 50 minutes. I know we talked to many folks at the base, and they, you know, often even reschedule their days, their work hours, so that they can avoid commutes as well. So 90% definitely would use the ferry, so all positive again. This list is a summary of the tasks from the Second Interim Agreement. This is showing our progress to date. A couple of key items I want to point out is that, you know, as I mentioned, things are rolling smoother than anticipated. So Mosaic has been extremely cooperative in the process, as well as Hart and Tibarda, and most significantly, we have been working with the Air Force and McDill. That has been going very smooth. The United States Air Force has taken the lead in being the lead federal agency for the National Environmental Policy Act, the NIPA process, which was a big accomplishment. As I mentioned, they've been very cooperative. In fact, the representatives from San Antonio were in our offices as recently as last week to work through the environmental documentation. So that is the reason why the accelerated tasks are more focused on actually getting into design and permitting. A summary of, or I want to give a quick highlight of where we're at in the design of the south terminal. So this red circle is where the terminal will be located, right in the middle of this industrial area. We have the Mosaic operations that will continue, and they will operate separately. And then, if you're familiar with the area, just to the south is the TECO operation. Here is a concept plan of the terminal. We will be constructing a road to Yandotte that, as mentioned, it will be isolated from Mosaic, and we've designed the parking to be, the parking lot to be catered around, hopefully, you know, future bus transit, as well as priority for van pools and car pools. The terminal building is going to be approximately 5,000 square foot with a significant outdoor patio, about 3,500 square foot is what we're looking at now. The intent of the programming of this is simply to be for queuing and ticketing. There will be vending machines, but, you know, nothing more than that. The pictures over to the right are inspiration photos of what the terminal facility will look like. So projected milestones, these are the, you know, the long-term milestones, the 350-passenger vessel. We hope to have that in service in March 2024 to serve the Tampa to St. Pete intercity service. But we anticipate to complete construction of the South County Terminal and the start of the South County Tampa to St. Pete intercity service, April 2025. And lastly, complete construction of the McDill Air Force Base Terminal and start of the commuter service in June 2025. And this is, you know, obviously provided that things continue to roll smoothly and environmental permitting continues to go. And of course, we'll be, you know, coming back to the board as the project progresses, but I wanted to at least give you some of those dates. And lastly, we have a grants team, and so we've been working with them to pull together this list of potential grants that this project will qualify for. I won't go through all of these here, but I just wanted to point out that we've identified several federal-state grants that we should be able to qualify for, and, you know, with approval of today and advancing design, that puts us in even better position to obtain these grants, since typically, you know, they look for projects that are construction-ready. And with that, that was the end of my presentation, but as I mentioned, we have the rest of the public-private partnership team available for questions.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I will move approval again, and just say that I'm just very, and I know South County is very thrilled about seeing this move ahead. It will be a real, it will be really transformative for South County to have this availability, and I want to, as well as actually South Tampa, who I've heard a lot from in terms of waiting at the gates and all the impacts of traffic that McDill has, and I'm really pleased to hear the work that we've been doing with the Air Force Base, and I know that there's a lot of interest and support over there, and there has been for years now, so it's great to see that moving along. But I'd like to take an opportunity to thank our Congresswoman, Kathy Castor, has been totally on top of this, and one of the reasons we have received $4.9 million for ferry, our first owned ferry when it comes here to the Tampa Bay area. And I'd like to as well thank Mosaic. It was one of the rare opportunities that we have to have water access for the public for such a project in South County. It was virtually impossible, which was a holdup for many years. So I think this will be transformative in terms of our transit transportation, but also for South County access choices. It will change a lot. So this is very exciting to see it move forward, and as was mentioned, even in the short months and limited service we have, we have record ridership, and that compares actually to a bus service that goes between the two places that is pretty robust, running nine or 10 times a day between Tampa and St. Pete and pretty express. This has, in six months, far outdone that year-long service every day. So it's meeting a lot of needs, and it's a really wonderful project.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I am also very excited. I have to tell you, people in South County are very, very excited and constantly asking me, what is going on with the ferry? When is this ferry going to come? When can we have this ferry service? And recently, a couple of months ago, I was asked to speak to the Sun City Center Kings Point Sportsman's Club about the ferry. They wanted an update on it, and I asked Ed Turancheck to come with me, and there were easily a couple hundred people there, maybe more, many veterans in that audience, and they were all very, very excited about the ferry, especially in its expanded route that would actually serve South County. And the veterans and their families were, the Sun City Center Kings Point Sportsman's Club includes a lot of veterans, and they and their families are very excited about being able to ride the ferry to the commissary and back without having to drive all the way around the bay. But also the other retirees who live in Sun City in that area were very excited about the idea that they could, you know, by simply getting to Big Bend, to the Mosaic site right there, they could then ride the ferry to St. Petersburg, to Tampa, and back nights and weekends for dinner, to see a show, to see a sporting event, and come back without having to drive around. You know, when you get to a certain age, you're not as ready or willing to drive around long distances in the dark, driving over the skyway, driving around up through, down long distances in the dark, driving over the skyway, driving around, up through downtown at night is really off-putting for a lot of people in Sun City. And it's, you know, it's another aspect of equity to serve our retired senior population with transit options that could take them and expand their opportunities and to, to enjoy what goes on in, in the cities around Tampa Bay. And they were very excited about it. At this presentation, after we finished answering a lot of questions and talking about the details, Ed asked the group, how many, you know, just how many here would ride this Ferry? Everybody. Everybody raised their hand. There was just a whole lot of excitement and enthusiasm. I'm also very excited about it. I can't wait to be riding my bike to the Ferry and then being able to access these other areas without having to drive around and get in traffic. And so I appreciate this, this report and the survey with the heightened excitement and, and people welcoming this project. I can't wait. I'm glad we were able to speed it up this morning.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. And those were both excellent comments. And Commissioner Kemp, congratulations, having worked on this project for so long, seeing it moving forward. Two additional comments that I wanted to make. First of all, in addition to the people in South County being excited about it, ever since I was on the Tampa City Council, I've heard from people on the peninsula who were really excited about it because of the huge amount of traffic that winds through the neighborhoods, either leaving or on its way to the base. And I think that, that this really does offer the opportunity to relieve some of that congestion in an area of our community that can't, can't be expanded. There's no, there's no real opportunity to add any capacity. So it's, it's really important to take advantage of, of opportunities like this to move people differently. I just wanted to make a comment on the, the plan that we saw, which I think is really, really nice and a lot of really good work. But I was a little bit surprised about limiting it to vending machines only. I have a feeling, looking at it and looking at the way people are going to use it, that it might call for a little bit more robust food service. People are going to be going there on their way to work. They're going to be stopping there at the breakfast hour. And it might, it might be worthwhile to look at this, this, this terminal in, in terms of providing just a few more amenities there, because my sense is that this is going to be a very popular destination and that this is even going to be a place that people are going to want to go for, for just access to being near the water. So I, I wouldn't discount this becoming a popular place for people to gather. And I, I hope that the, the Kim Lee Horn Group can look at that as we move forward with the planning.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Could I ask the team to bring up the last slide on the grant funding opportunities? I too am enormously excited about this, but for a lot of different reasons. As we know, when we periodically get a report from Visit Tampa Bay, from our sports authority, from our sports commission, from our tourist development council, who talks about the enormous amount of economic impact that our tourism and our wonderful amenities that are part of Hillsborough County's economy. As we will hear, you know, our parks and recs, our wonderful environment creates an enormous economic opportunity for the workforce that lives here and the community that lives here, that is creating some, some challenges. Everybody and their brother wants to live here. And as we know, we have on the docket, because I sign the MyLars now about every week, a lot of housing coming into South County. But I have the pleasure of having the opportunity of develop, of being the liaison on behalf of the county to McDill Air Force Base and our military personnel that live here in the, in the area and serving as a liaison with our veteran community, where we have the highest percentage of veterans in a metropolitan area in the country. That's a large number of the people that live here that have the ID necessary to have access to the base. And a good portion of them live in South County. To be able to utilize these resources and to create access to not only the base, but to amenities that really drive our economy in Hillsborough County as well as the region is a smart way of investing in our infrastructure. What you see on the screen also is indicative of the work that's been done to partner with various different entities associated with investing in our infrastructure. And what's necessary in this situation is the partnership we would have with the Federal Transit Administration, with the DOD, with, you know, the Federal Transportation Agency, with the Federal Highway Administration, with our State Department of Transportation, as well as with the public-private partnership with HMS and the other parties. As you can see from this slide, there is the required match that Hillsborough County will have to have in order to be able to move a project like this forward. Currently, we do not have, what I think is a current budget for the required match in order to access all of the various different partners necessary in order to make any one of our transportation efforts happen. So when we talk about investing in our infrastructure, we have to recognize this not only is a wonderful project where we have anywhere from 10 to 50% we have to come up with. And there's only really one of them that, two of them that would indicate a 50% match. Majority of them are lower than that, closer to 20 to 10%. That matters. It gives us the ability to get a valuable transit resource available to assist the second largest employer in our county with the ability to use the van pool and other resources, including possibly Heart as a partnership for helping people get to this location in order to help people get around in an area that is clearly challenged with the lack of infrastructure, and that is in South County. So with that, I'd like to really celebrate that this has been a collaborative effort to solve problems. I do speak with the people that work at McDill that are highly excited about this. And one of the biggest challenges the, the base is serving right now is the lack of access to housing that's close to the base. It is critically important that the people that serve our, our military have the ability to get to the base in the event we wish to ever have a problem. And right now, on average, as we saw in this report, our military personnel, our airmen and women that serve our country and provide us with security, national security, are spending 40 to 50 minutes or more trying to get to the base when they have to get there. And that is not okay when it comes to our national security. Being able to look at this and to address the fact that we have a 500 family waiting list for people who have orders to be here that have to find housing that we don't have locally already there matters. So the big picture is going to take a while to make this happen, but the good news, it's going to solve a lot of challenges that we have here in Hillsborough County for not only the second largest employer in Hillsborough County, but to really to address the opportunity to invest in our infrastructure. And I want to thank the team and the county staff for really taking a look at this to provide a reasonable, workable solution that doesn't require Hillsborough County to break the bank to make happen, as long as we're able to competitively, you know, meet these, these grant opportunities. And that's not automatic. They are competitive, but it looks like we've got a good team putting together a solution. So with that, I will ask for you to end. I don't see any other persons asking for comment. With that, I'll ask for you to indicate your motion, I mean, your vote on the motion to receive the report.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Hagan voted no.
Thank you very much. With that, Ms. Wise.
Thank you. Our next item is item B three. This is to approve the dedication and renaming of Temple Park as the Peppin Family Park. Rick Valdez, Director of Parks and Recreation, will present this item and introduce our special guests.
Excellent. Thank you. You're recognized.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Rick Valdez, Parks and Recreation. I'm also joined by Ms. Tina Peppin, our public defender, Ms. Julian Holt, and our Chief of Temple Terrace Police, Chief Ken Albano. Item B three is asking the approval, to approve the dedication and renaming of Temple Park to the Peppin Family Park by waiving BLCC policy 1.12.00.00. And any costs associated with this dedication can be absorbed in the Parks and Recreation's FY22 budget. Mr. Chief Albano would like to step forward with your approval and say a few words.
Yes, sir. You're recognized.
Chair, over and done. Commissioners, thank you. On behalf of myself, my good friends, I'm honored to stand here before you as you consider the renaming of, of this park, which is really a life's work and then some 55 years in the making. It's not simply a renaming that would, would focus on the accomplishments of Tom Peppin, but the entire Peppin family. From Art and Polly's beginnings, when they moved to Florida and took up residence in Temple Terrace, and now to the current time where his, Tom's daughter Tina is in charge of the foundation, they have contributed time and time again throughout our county, in the city of Tampa and the city of Temple Terrace to what I think helps to make our, our communities a great place to, to live. And certainly this honor is something that I think is, is befitting all those contributions, not to mention the fact that recently the Peppin Family Foundation also has, has agreed to partner with us and continued support of the Sam and Larice Hashem Temple Terrace Boys and Girls Club. Lastly, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you all, because there would be no Sam and Larice Hashem Temple Terrace Boys and Girls Club if it were not for your initial support that turned an abandoned county park into a thriving county park and a place where the children of the Boys and Girls Club come every day after school to work, to play, to study and to feel loved and to have a chance at a brighter tomorrow. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. If someone else in your group would like to speak, please come to the podium.
I know she would like to speak after, depending on how the commission votes on this matter, but if you'd like her to speak now, she could.
I would like to address you guys. Thank you, Commissioners, for, for your consideration today. My name is Tina Peppin.
Thank you.
My name is Tina Peppin. My grandparents are Arthur and Polly Peppin. My father is Tom Peppin, and I'm honored to represent them all today here with you guys. Regardless of the decision you make today, I'm here to pledge that, as we've done for over 60 years in Temple Terrace and in Tampa, the Peppin Family pledges to continue to support this community. As foundation leader, it is an honor to partner with mentoring programs like the Boys and Girls Club, who dedicate their mission to supporting vulnerable children in our community and to give them that, that purpose and that passion and to help them become successful members of our community, which is exactly what my grandfather's mission was over 60 years ago. It's what my father expanded and it's what I'm here today to, to prove to you all that we're going to be expanding. So thank you again for your time and your consideration. I'm so thankful and honored to be here today. So thank you so much.
Thank you for the work you do too.
Thank you.
Ms. Holt.
Just a good morning and thank you very much for everything. I know you have a jammed up agenda, so we just want to thank you very much.
Okay. Councilman Citra.
No. Thank you. I'm just here in support of all the great things that the family has done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Several months ago, I was contacted by Chief Albano requesting the board rename Temple Park to Peppin Family Park. And having, you know, a long relationship with Tom Peppin and I have a tremendous amount of respect and admiration for Tom, what he's done in our community is remarkable. He's one of our best community partners. Simply put, Tampa and Hillsborough County is a much better place thanks to Tom Peppin. So I immediately wanted to say yes, of course. However, I told the chief that typically our board, when we have an advisory board or a task force, we typically ask for a recommendation from the board before we consider any type of naming or renaming. So I asked the chief if he would please go and present to the Parks Advisory Board. He did, and I'm very pleased that the board unanimously supported recommending this renaming. So I want to first of all, thank the Parks Board for their, for considering and supporting the request. As, you know, the chief pointed out, his remarks, the Peppins charitable and philanthropic good works go back decades to Tom and Tina's parents, Art and Polly, who lived in Temple Terrace and did so much for the community. Years later, as we all know, the Peppin Family Foundation was created, and I could speak for an hour on all of their support and everything they've done for so many causes in Hillsborough County. A few notable ones, of course, the Peppin Heart Institute, Peppin Academies, University of Tampa, Peppin Stadium. They're heavily involved in American Heart Association, Boys and Girls Clubs, Hillsborough Education Foundation, Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, just to name a few. I think Chief Albano's remarks to the Parks Board really said it best, and I just went just a couple of sentences that he, he stated. The Peppin family's roots run deep into the fabric of what makes Temple Terrace such a wonderful place to call home is because of this connection to Temple Terrace and Tom's genuine commitment to providing educational and growth opportunities for children, especially for those most challenged or at risk. The Peppin Family Foundation has committed to provide the Temple Terrace Boys and Girls Club with some immediate financial assistance to address current operational needs and to partner with the club for many years to come. Well-stated, chief. Could not say it any better. So I'm very pleased to make a motion that we rename the Temple Park to the Peppin Family Park in honor of the entire Peppin family and for all their service, contributions, and ongoing commitment to the entire Tampa Bay community.
Second. Okay. I think, I think you're good. I think you're good. We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan and a second, I think, by everybody up here. And I just want to say, this is very exciting. You know, the work that's been done in the community is, is amazing. That when, you know, when private and public efforts come together, good things happen. And so, and this is a perfect example of that. So with that, if, if there's no other comment, please indicate your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Well, let's do a photo. Is that okay? Can we take the time to do that? Come on up, up this way. And thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for everything you guys do. We'll move on to item D one. Ms. Wise.
Thank you. Item D one is to conduct the first of two required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportionate shared mitigation development agreement. Adam Goran Lee will present this item, and this is a public hearing.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Goran Lee with Development Services Department. Item D one is the first of two required public hearings to consider a school concurrency proportionate shared proportionate shared mitigation agreement among the county, EPC Ruskin LLC, and the School Board of Hillsborough County. The purpose of the agreement is to satisfy concurrency for a proposed Sherwood Phase 4C and Phases 5A through C project. The project consists of 173 single-family detached dwellings. The agreement calls for a payment of $1,399,200 to construct 16 middle school student stations and 24 high school student stations to accommodate the impacts of the project. These student stations would be constructed at the new high school, VV, and middle school, UU, which is located on West Lake Drive, south of 674. The second public hearing is scheduled to be held on September 8th, 2022, and I'm available for any questions.
Excellent. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. We have one person that's signed up to speak to this item on D one. That's Kami Corbett, who's joining us virtually.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kami Corbett with the law firm of Hillward Henderson. I am just here representing the applicant, and I'm available for any questions. The same is true for D one, D two, and D three. So, if there are no questions, I don't need to be called on again. Thank you.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much. We'll close the public hearing and open it up for Board discussion or a consideration of a vote. Do I have a motion? Then we don't vote? We're just hearing it? Okay. Excellent. Well, next to the next item. Ms. Wise.
Thank you. The next item is Item D two. This is also the first of two public hearings. Adam Gormley will take us through this item as well.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Item D two is a school concurrency proportionate shared mitigation development agreement amongst the county, Spencer Farms, and the School District of Hillsborough County. The purpose of the agreement is to satisfy school concurrency for the Sherwood Phase 4A and 4B project. This project consists of 152 single-family detached dwellings. The agreement calls for a payment of $1,262,186 to construct 14 middle school student stations and 22 high school student stations to accommodate the impacts of the project. These student stations would be constructed at high school, VV, and middle, I'm sorry, middle school, VV, and high school, UUU, located on West Lake Drive, south of 674 in Wyomama. The second public hearing is scheduled for September 8th, 2022, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I do only have one person signed up to speak, and that's Kami Corbett.
Good morning. Kami Corbett with Hillward Henderson. I do not need to speak unless there are any questions.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Next item?
The next item is Item D three. Adam Gormley will take us through this development agreement as well.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley, Hillsborough County Development Services Department. Item D three is a school concurrency proportionate shared mitigation development agreement amongst the county Development LLC and the School District of Hillsborough County, School Board of Hillsborough County. The purpose of the agreement is to satisfy school concurrency for the proposed Sherwood Phase 3C project. This consists of 21 single-family detached dwelling units. The agreement calls for a payment of $174,900 to construct two middle school student stations and two high school student stations to accommodate the impacts of the project. These student stations will be constructed at middle school, VV, and high school, UU, located on West Lake Drive, south of 674 in Wyomama. The second public hearing is scheduled for September 8th, 2022, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. We have one person signed up to speak. Ms. Kami Corbett, would you like to offer any comment?
Good morning. Kami Corbett, Hillward Henderson. No, nothing further. Thank you.
Excellent. We'll close the public hearing. And Ms. Wise.
Thank you. We can go to the regular agenda now, and we'll stick with Adam. Adam Gormley will take us through Item B one. This is the Hillsborough County Public Schools' request to disperse school impact fee funds.
Excellent. Mr. Gormley, you're recognized.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Item B one is a request to disperse $45,152,850 at the request of the Hillsborough County School Board, sorry, dispersment of school impact fee funds at the request of the Hillsborough County School Board. The purpose of the funds will be to construct capacity-enhancing additions to Robinson High School, located at 6311 South Lois Avenue in Tampa, and the Collins Elementary School, located at 12424 Summerfield Boulevard in Riverview. The request for Robinson is to dispersment of $5,264,264,850 to construct an addition to the 150 student addition to the Robinson High School. And for Collins School, which is currently an elementary school, the requested dispersment would be used to construct, in addition to the school, to support the school becoming a PK-through-eight school to serve the surrounding neighborhood. The dispersment amount for Collins is $39,888,000. There are sufficient school impact fee funds collected, and they are collected and retained solely for the purpose of providing additional school capacity, which this, both projects will accomplish. I am available for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. With that, I will move approval by Commissioner Smith. Second by Commissioner Myers. Please indicate your vote, unless there's further discussion. I don't see none.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Wise.
Thank you. The next item is Item F one. This is Commissioner Hagan's item regarding the Taylor Morrison housing development.
Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to thank everyone who came down during public comment this morning, sharing their concerns with this project. As we could all see, the neighbors are clearly frustrated. By now, I'm sure we're all aware of the large development under construction by Taylor Morrison in the Keystone area. Essentially, it's 200 units on 200 acres. This development secured its zoning over 30 years ago, which precedes many of our current codes and obviously the Keystone community plan. Surveyors and engineers began showing up on the site in January of this year, which is about the time the community and this Board consequently first learned about the project. Right then, anyone that knows of Keystone's advocacy for their community could see a standoff coming. This Board is also aware of the, that our staff and legal counsel have previously advised us that we largely have no control over the density and conditions of the development. However, even though the project obtained its land use approvals, long before this Board was seated, the developer must still obtain the required building permits and abide by the prescribed conditions. It should come as no surprise that the citizens have filed suit against the county and that the relations between the residents and contractors are strained. We have received over 400 emails from neighbors. My office is regularly receiving reports from citizens of permit violations and perceived irregularities coming, both at the site and alongside of the roadside, I guess, and the right-of-way where the utility lines are being installed. In at least two of the cases, the citizens' suspicions were justified. In one case, again, we heard about this morning, nearly the entire 200 acres were cleaned of trees without proper permits being issued. The other had to do with the evening work being done in the right-of-way, yet permits for nighttime land closures was denied. I believe the only permits issued are for intermittent land closures between 9:00 and 4:00. Yet, we also have a citizen-supplied video of work crews operating on Racetrack Road well into the night. In all instances, our investigators were dispatched, and twice the accusations were confirmed. On the case of the mass tree removal, the developer has agreed to replant. As far as the night work, contractors were issued a stern warning. There have been other concerns expressed, including stockpiling without permits. Been advised that the developer's being investigated by FWC as to their actions related to wildlife surveying and relocation, primarily with gopher tortoises. And again, we heard about that this morning. Simply put, Taylor Morrison has been extremely poor neighbors. It was characterized by a couple speakers this morning. One was stated arrogance and disdain. Another one used the term betrayal. Three observations that are glaring. Number one, the Keystone community once again feels like they are alone, that we've washed our hands, and that the developer largely goes unchecked. Secondly, the violations are coming to our attention via the citizens and not as a result of our monitoring, and we need to do a much better job in being proactive, not reactive. And third, the builders most certainly keen to expedite their work schedule, permits We've had requests for stop-work orders. We had a letter from the KC, from KCA, and their president spoke this morning, requesting that we suspend the development permit. I think it's important for this Board and, of course, the neighbors to really know and understand what authority that we have on this issue. Personally, I want to suspend the development permit. I would like to do so today. But I guess the question I have, and I don't know if this is for Christine or if this is for Adam, I guess two questions. Can this Board suspend the development permit? And/or, at this point, can we issue a stop-work order? I guess that's kind of the first two questions.
Recognize Connie, Attorney Christine Beck.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner, for that question. And as you know, we are in litigation, so as is our normal and customary best practice, we caution the Board about that. But in terms of the specific question, our best advice would be to allow this process to be handled through the normal rules and development, or the department processes, which they go out and investigate, and they have the authority to take action. It would not be our advice that this Board were to issue a stop-work order because of due process concerns and that sort of thing, and we do not believe that that would be the appropriate course of action here.
The second question, on the letter from Keystone Civic Association, it says, "Failure to comply with the terms of the development agreement is grounds for revocation," and it references a Florida statute. Again, can Christine or Adam clarify as to that statute and if it applies on this case?
Adam, I might need your help with that, or possibly somebody else from my staff.
Yes. Yes, Commissioner, I believe what that reference was to, was to a provision in Florida statutes that deal with what's called a development agreement. We call it a 163 development agreement because it's authorized by Chapter 163 Florida statutes. This project does not have a development agreement associated with it, so that the statutory reference relating to development agreements is not applicable to this project due to the absence of a development agreement, which is a discretionary agreement for developments. Oftentimes, it's used to address concurrency issues, much like the school concurrency proportionate shared development agreement. But this project is not subject to such an agreement, so that provisions would not apply at this time.
Well, again, as I stated earlier, I personally would like to bring the wrath of God down on them, to be quite honest with you. I'm extremely upset and perturbed with, and I think the residents stated it correctly, arrogance, betrayal, disdain. So, if we're limited on what action we can take, I'm going to make this motion, and if any Board members or staff has any thoughts on strengthening it, I'm more than open for that. But I'll start with the county administrator, have her staff review all issued permits and pending applications related to this housing project, both on and off-site, to ensure conformity, that enforcement, monitoring, having that increased, but enforcement be implemented to the fullest extent, allowed under our code, including the issuance of stop-work orders when they can be issued.
Give a motion by Commissioner Hagan, and a second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Hagan, for bringing this to our Board and for working closely, as I know you have, with our Development Services staff, as well as our legal staff. And thank you to our county attorney and your staff, who I know is, feels the frustration of this Board and where we want to go, and is helping us to understand what we can and cannot do. I know our county attorney's been very, helped us be very creative and think outside the box where possible. And I want to assure the residents that we are, we are hearing them, and we are not just, you know, going along. We are really looking into every tool at our disposal. I too want to thank the residents who came down today to inform us about what is going on in their community. This is a large county, and it's really important that the citizens tell us what they're seeing on the ground in their communities, and so we understand. I feel their pain in seeing this development moving forward, even though it is completely contrary to their community plan. Unfortunately, because, you know, I think everybody, even the, including the citizens, understands that because the zoning was granted before the community plan was put in place, we cannot take away their entitlements, which became their property rights whence the zoning was granted back in early '90s. I have lived through similar things in my own community in Ruskin, where we had to watch some developments get built, very contrary to our community plan, because they were zoned prior to our plan. And I know it's frustrating, after you work really hard on your community plan, to watch that happen. It's also heartbreaking to listen to the residents describing the destruction of the wildlife habitat that they cherish so deeply in their community, and their concerns, legitimate concerns about water quality and everything else that the trees and the wildlife brings to their community. Taylor Morrison, as we heard the citizens recount and as we've seen in our email, is asking for forgiveness, not permission. They are the worst of the kinds of bad actors that we see in that industry, doing unpermitted work in every way, from removing protected wildlife, gopher tortoises, without a permit, or prior to getting a permit, cutting down trees without a permit, prior to getting their permit. You know, and then when they're caught working at night, contrary to their permit, they go, okay, okay, they pay whatever fine and get whatever permit and just consider that a cost of doing business. It's important for us to apply our codes and regulations to everyone. And when we have someone who makes an honest mistake, it's okay to cut them a little slack. But when we have someone who is consistently thumbing their nose at the rules, we should clamp down as hard as we possibly can. And thank you, Commissioner Hagan, for, you know, leading us to try to find, to do that as much as we can. I also wonder if there's any way that we can raise the fines and penalties for bad actors. As I say, you know, when somebody, you know, whoops, makes some mistake, finds themselves in violation, didn't know, okay, cut them a little slack, give them the permit. But when somebody is blatantly, over and over, just flaunting the rules, I would like to ask our county attorney also, and I don't know if this needs to be incorporated in the motion, or it can just be a future item, if there's, to look into some way we can raise fines and penalties for bad actors with multiple violations. And maybe, do I need to make that as a separate motion after this?
You do not. We'll be happy to look into that for you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Because, you know, we, I know that our county attorneys and Development Services has worked really hard on our new gopher tortoise regulations that I brought forward, and everybody here is working to support. forward, and everybody here is working to support, because we're seeing developers violating those rules outrageously slaughtering gopher tortoises, and then just simply paying the fines if they get caught. And now our new rules have really got some creative aspects in place to really closely monitor bad actors and make it less financially absorbable for them to continue violating the rules and just paying the fines if they get caught. So hopefully, we can, you know, maybe see how some of that applies to some of these other kinds of permits, of violations, cutting trees, the working outside of work hours, and that sort of thing. But, you know, I'm really happy to try to do everything we can to make sure that people follow our rules. So, thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
And I want to thank Commissioner Hagan for bringing it forward. Commissioner Smith, that was very good to hear about anything we may be able to do in this regards, and I, it sounds like they are just blatant violators, as you've pointed out, and, you know, this is, as we've stated many times before, and as we've tried to do research on this and look back, this is an entitlement that was approved some 30 years ago, and we know that the community is incredibly disturbed, but these kinds of violations in the building process are kind of like just pouring gas on the fire that's already there, and the anger that's already there. So, you know, it looks like the one tool might be, you know, raising fines, or, you know, I don't know, I know that I've been contacted several times, and I have to thank staff because their responses have been absolutely immediate. I mean, within one minute of being contacted by people in the community with pictures, I forwarded them to staff and have been told that someone is on their way, and I'm able to tell the community, someone is on their way to find out if this is a violation or not. So, and as Commissioner Smith pointed out, it is a big county. It's not as if we can have county staff out there on every single project 24 hours a day to understand the violations everywhere. So, it's the residents out there reporting, that's very important to the process. That's part of what we can do to work on this. I did want to just make a couple comments, and I know it's heartbreaking to see this. I know it's heartbreaking for the community, but I just want to make sure about a couple comments, because I, this morning, I did hear a lot about, we thought it was an ELAP purchase, they had already had it. And I don't know where that information comes from, but it was never contemplated as an ELAP property has, you know, never been there, maybe people assumed because it hadn't been touched, even though it was zoned in 1991, that it somehow was on some list, some consideration, already was. But I like to just make sure that there is no impression that, you know, ELAP had nominated this, that it ever was, or that it was rejected somehow or not, moved on when we could have. So I think it, just to clarify for the record, that information, and as well, I know I've been asked, because one of the permissions that they have in 1991 that they wouldn't have received today is to have sewer and wastewater put out to this site, and I've been asked many times, well, doesn't that just, you know, break the whole urban service area line, putting that out there to the community? I've said this publicly from this day as before, but it's one thing I checked on, you know, back in the, with our development services, and then I had it confirmed publicly here by Adam Gormley, I believe, at the time, and I don't know if we need to go through that again, but basically, what I was told is the water and wastewater that is brought over the line to this community of 190 homes, to this development of 190 homes, will be sized to only suit the 190 homes. It will not be eligible for connection elsewhere or service elsewhere. So I think that that's important to put forward, because I've been repeatedly asked about that. And finally, Jan Platt did so much for this community in terms of protecting it and being careful about development, and I know her name was invoked, and she did incredible things, but I actually think, honestly, that this development may have been approved back when there was a board, when she was a board member. I don't know that she supported it or voted for it, but I just think that that is a way that, you know, some of these things have moved forward over the years and gotten their entitlements, and I think it's just, you know, also, that is just part of the process that we've been involved with, and I'm going to, you know, future items, talk a little bit about that, but there's a, there's a whole lot of developments across this county that are already entitled, that have not been touched in sometimes as much as 30 years, and 20 years, and 10 years, that, you know, we at this time can do very little about, except enforce the rules, which are quite robust, and we've been trying as much as we could to enforce them. So, I, you know, we'll do everything to work with the community and look down every avenue and path and tool that we have, but, and we thank you for coming forward.
Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. I think it's really important that each of us speak out in support of what Commissioner Hagan is trying to do today, because I think it's very important that the developer hear the resolve of the whole board in terms of our concern, more than concern, our really exasperation of the story of what's been done here. There were two specific things that I wanted to mention. The first is to Commissioner Smith's point about the fines. I worked on a tree ordinance in the city of Tampa when I was on city council, literally for like the entire last two years that I was there. We passed it a week before the council ended, and within weeks of that, the state legislature came in and completely wiped out everything that we had worked so hard to do. And it was, it was an effort that was made up of environmentalists and neighborhood advocates and developers. Everyone was involved in coming up with the rules. And the bottom line of the matter is that it's all been wiped away by state action, and we really need to do something about that. The biggest problem here with the fines is that for a normal individual to take down a tree and get fined $5,000 or $10,000 is an enormous deterrent. But for a great big home builder to do it, these fines are just a cost of doing business. And I think that while you can't discriminate in, you know, who has to pay what fine, repeat offenses are definitely, I think, the way to go with this, because anybody that makes a practice of doing this regularly could see these fines start to increase very fast. And I think that as we look at this, that's probably the area that we want to go down. I also just want to say that Commissioner Hagan mentioned the community's outrage at having to monitor this themselves, and I do think that now that we are on notice, we've been on notice, given the volume of email for quite some time, but now that we have had this meeting in public, everyone is on notice that these things are going to be watched. And if the authority isn't there to issue a stop-work order now, at the very least, going forward, we should be watching everything and making sure that every i is dotted and every t is crossed, because we know that we have an actor here who can't be trusted to follow the rules. And at this point, I think we're, it's incumbent upon us collectively to do everything we can to make sure that the rules are being followed, and I just wanted to add my voice so that in the future, if there's another motion that comes up, everyone knows that this board is prepared to move quickly, to do what we can to stop these abuses.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And just to correct the record, Jan Platt was on the board, but she did not vote for this. So I think it's important to point that out, since you raised the point, and I hope that after I'm gone, if somebody would ever say, this happened while Mariella was here, somebody would speak up and say, yeah, but over her dead body. So, so that. And then, you know, the gopher tortoise regulations, I just want to say, besides increasing fines for multiple, we have some really creative aspects of this coming back that make it less than lucrative for bad actors to just consider it the cost of doing business, to ask for the permit after the permit is violated, so that it doesn't just go, oh, yeah, well, fine. It's a lot more onerous if you're asking for a permit after the violation has occurred, so that provides incentive to get the permit first. Thanks.
Can I just, quickly, thank you for that information, and I wasn't obviously trying to impugn Jan Platt, but there are limits on what we can do, and a great environmentalist and protector of the community, and really, someone who really checked on development, you know, was, she, there are limits to any one commissioner's power or three commissioners' power, maybe not to four commissioners' power sometimes. But, but, you know, I just wanted to say, we're kind of in this position here with what decision was made back in 1991, and I hadn't looked at the history, I could be pretty sure that that would have been the case, but thanks for clarifying.
Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It appears to me that the developer is comfortable in paying the fines and all, but maybe we can look at a possibility of debarment. I know it's in litigation now, but what opportunities that we will have to look for the barment with this developer, since he continues to do the same thing over and over and over. So if you don't mind paying a fine, you're going to pay the fine, but if we can debar them, there's no fine to pay, we'll hit them a little bit harder. They won't have the opportunity to...
Yeah, we, I think we will take this as an understanding of, to look at all things that might help in this situation, so we'll include everything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. And I did have a couple of questions. I mean, obviously, they had the zoning, but that doesn't preclude them from filing permits currently, and those permits then should have current-day standards associated with that process. And if I'm hearing it correctly, that had not been done correctly, so we weren't necessarily completely on the radar, although when the permits were asked, you know, for those that were filed, I'm not sure where that stands, but we do have an issue here, where longtime entitlements matter, but current permitting hasn't been waived, I don't think. And so, when all those rules associated with the actual permits that have been issued, should they actually have been filed for? That becomes, that's where I have questions on this. And I too would like to get a better, some clarity on the, on the community's issue associated with the relationship with ELAP and what that was, whether or not that was maybe a ranked piece of property that we didn't own. I think it's going to be important that we address that if at all, or whether or not at one point in time, it was just described to be available but not owned. So I would like to at least make sure that we get out to the public, to clarify what that was about. But I too, I don't have a problem with the fact that people have entitlements of zoning that is, you know, 30, 40 years old. We have terminated that for any new projects that, moving forward, this board has taken action to address applications that have been done, I think, over the last five years, that they have to actually reapply for that, for that zoning and those entitlements, but that doesn't fix, unfortunately, the ones that we have had to live with. But it does require that permitting be done, and it has to be done in a good way, and bad actors need to pay the consequences. So I really like your comment, Commissioner Cohen, on the, you know, if every, if every builder-developer had to pay what an individual has to pay when they violate a tree ordinance fine, we would probably see a lot more trees being maintained in communities as they're built. And that's critically important for our own sustainability and environmental protection. So I appreciate the comments we've heard today. We have a motion on the floor, and a second, I'm sorry, who made the second? Commissioner Smith made the second. Please indicate your vote.
And I just want to thank all the board members for their comments and support.
Thank you. Thank you very much for bringing that forward. I appreciate it, too. Commissioner, I mean, Ms. Wise.
Thank you. The final item are future discussion items.
Yes, I've been trying to, mine wouldn't work. I hit it like three times. I have an item I'd like to bring forth, and I had talked to Ms. Wise about this, and I had asked for this some years ago and couldn't seem to be provided, so actually relevant to this conversation that we just had. And that's, and relevant to many of the conversations we've been having about housing. We have always, here in Hillsborough County, have had almost, even, the recession slowed it down some, but a blistering pace of housing being put down in an incredibly robust way. But I think we kind of, I've always been surprised by this. We operate in a bit of a silo here at the county commission, because we have these separate land use meetings, which do the rezoning, but kind of not an overview of what's happening in the community, and there are kind of out-of-this-meeting, transportation's dealt with at the TPO. So it's very hard to get a handle on the big picture of what's happening here in Hillsborough County. I know at one time, I believe that there was, after many times being asked, there was a map that was generated. Wasn't there, Commissioner Smith, with regards to, I thought we had some kind of information about the outstanding entitlements and where they were, and we had a presentation of that. Is that, is that accurate, memory, to my memory?
What I recall is being a citizen activist for growth management, and we would occasionally ask, how many, how many units are there that are not built yet, that are zoned but not built, so that even if we didn't rezone another thing, or raise density in our comprehensive plan another, another bit, how many, how much housing could be built, is available to be built? And it would always be something like, a lot.
Yeah.
So, but I don't remember, I think you're right, where there has been some maps.
It seems like something was generated, a workshop or something. At any rate, I would like to have this more forefront in our mind, like this is part of looking at all these not in silos, like we tend to, and then forget obvious, I mean, as you would, because it's just not presented all the time. So I had talked to Ms. Wise, and what I would like to do is see a quarterly report done before the, you know, we have Visit Tampa Bay, or we have different groups come in here, you know, with a yearly, annual report. I'd really like to see a quarterly report of outstanding entitlements that are, that could be put in the ground but aren't where they are, how they are. I know we did a five-year limit now on new ones, but see that as it moved along, so we have an idea of what's already there and been approved but not... have an idea of what's already there and been approved but not, you know, being built, how much that supply would be. And secondly, I wanted to have, which I've never, ever gotten, even though I've asked for it, not in recent times, but in my first several years, I would like to see our, you know, our certificates of occupancy, I guess, would be the count that we have going down quarterly in unincorporated Hillsborough County, in Tampa, in Plant City, and in Temple Terrace. So we have an idea. We have a huge, incredible amount of housing being built and ready for occupancy, but I don't think we have a sense of it. And I think just like a 10-minute quarterly report, and I would like it done before the board, not just, you know, put in the end of our packet, but just something to make us more aware of this. And since I've talked to you, I've also kind of was trying to think about this as well, and I don't know if this is possible, but here's the -- I know we did also a report on this with, in terms of affordable housing. So we had like an inventory of affordable housing done, so we could see that, and I, as well, in Temple Terrace, Tampa, and Plant City. But I -- and I looked in vain for it in the last couple of days. I know that I read an article in the last year by NPR that showed across the country year by year, the number of housing units being built, the number of affordable housing units being built, and showed that every year we were getting huge numbers of housing units being built. That really wasn't the problem. But we were actually losing year after year after year affordable housing units. And I'm not just talking about here, I'm talking about everywhere across the country. It didn't explicitly say Florida, but to -- I've also had some notes here because this has been such a topic of discussion, but it's a -- there's several books on this, but this one is -- I'm trying to see where he -- this NYU professor, Professor Ross, wrote -- Andrew Ross, he wrote a book, Sunbelt Blues: A Failure of American Housing, and he's apparently really focused on Florida. This is a very current book, and they're just looking at this story's from November 2021. And he talks about Florida, the usual drivers of Florida real estate, sunshine and no income taxes coupled with the movement to work from anywhere and historically low interest rates, of course, that's been changed, for those who qualify have fueled a fury of home buying, driving up prices. And I think I've stated before here that, to my surprise, Miami-Dade actually has lost population as well as Broward, as well as Osceola and Orange Counties. And at least at Miami-Dade, they said it was because the lack of affordability was actually having fewer people. It said that also is the investor-owned properties, especially large corporate owners such as private equity firms that swooped in after Florida was on the forefront of a housing collapse more than a decade ago. As we know, that has hit Hillsborough County especially hard. We've always been hit by speculators. This is a new take that's really hurting this dynamic. The lure of Florida has been an enduring force that continues to shape the state. Moving more people to Florida is so important that the state's own economic research agency declared in 2020, quote, "Population growth is the state's primary engine of economic growth, fueling both employment and income growth. It's an important reminder when thinking about how policymakers may address the challenge of housing affordability. Any solutions to increasing unaffordable homes and apartments would have to balance the need for population growth with Florida's fragile environment, choke transportation systems, and squeeze geography shaped by water." And then they say that a huge number of people that come, a lot of these folks, this is the professor, are not well-heeled. They're economic fugitives coming because they've heard jobs are plentiful, which we used to have plentiful jobs, especially in the tourism hospitality industry, which is exceedingly low-paying. And a lot of them end up homeless or living in hotels or really struggling for a roof over their head, so there's a lot of demand there. But the, you know, the problem, you know, that's why I would like to see if we could have, we could find out how we're increasing, if we're actually increasing, our affordable housing. Because I know even, I mean, just in the last year, we lost a huge area of housing in Ebor City there that was mostly affordable housing. Over by Blake High School, the Presbyterian Apartments have been taken away. There's been more housing built there, but I wonder if we're where we are in that balance of losing affordable housing units. I don't know if that's possible to find out, but the expert on affordable housing, I'm asking.
Well, certainly, we will see what we can do. It's a little bit harder. We'll work with the cities as well, so let us just see as much information as we can provide.
Okay, thank you. So that's my request, because I'd like us to start understanding that and understanding what issues we have out there with regards to this and how we might work very specifically.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. And actually, that's very good information. And to your point, we are losing affordable housing units on a pretty steady basis. Many of the affordable housing units that were built 30 years or so, 10 or 30 or 20 years ago, the lurors that require the units within a mixed-income community, of which we have had several of them built with only 10% affordable housing allocation, are expiring regularly. We lost more than we were able to build last year. So getting a read on that, I think, would be very valuable. And there are partners around the area that have really looked at it at a global space. For example, the partnership has actually done some analysis in that area. The Schimberg Report is very helpful. But again, that data is like two years old from what we have previously said. So I would look forward to seeing whether or not we're increasing that rate. And that's going to be critically important as we approach the second hearing on the housing element of our comp plan, which we have coming back to us in October, and then how we address the bus effecis corridor density numbers that impact and have some guidance on how affordable housing moves forward. So I'm looking forward to seeing that come together. Commissioner Kemp?
I have a second future item.
Okay.
As many of you know, at the land use hearing, I was quite disturbed by a map that went up. That was a Hillsborough County Future Vision Map, which was apparently never passed by Hillsborough County. And I found it a disturbing map and one that, you know, I totally thought was not a wise picture for the future of Hillsborough County. But I thought somehow it was, I had no idea, it was not a verified map or never a passed map until that hearing. And it's been on the books since 2015. The next day, I'll just tell you, I went to the Plan, the Planning Commission website and just, well, actually, I Googled it, Hillsborough County Vision Map, and it took me to the Hillsborough County Planning Commission website where the map was sitting there with no disclaimer that it hadn't been, that hadn't been passed by the county with a, you know, anybody who saw that would totally think that it was a plan that we had for the future. And I had spoken to Ms. Ornita, and she was very good. I assume by now that that map is down and didn't realize that that map was up, but it's probably been up for eight years there, I guess, or seven or six years. I'm not sure. She said it was done sometime in 13 or 14, and it was just up there for a sample that was being talked about at the time, never, never put forward, never moved. But at any rate, I had also talked to her about the fact, she said, "It's probably time for a new vision map and new discussions about this." And I know I had talked to Ms. Wise about this going on in the future, too. So I'll just bring that up at this time to kind of let people know where that stands. It's not with a request right now, except that I think that we might be moving in the direction of reconsideration of that whole picture. And Commissioner White, I'm so sorry that you won't be here for that because I think maybe you could, like, crash the meetings or something.
We might give you more than three minutes.
Citizen comment, citizen comments.
There you go.
Thank you. And, you know, in light of that, I think readdressing our comp plan, and, you know, it's interesting because this board serves on a lot of boards. You know, we all have our individual boards that we select, you know, each annually, and we either get appointed to or we sign up for, depending on how the meeting goes and how many boards we actually serve. But in that case, we all serve on the land use, and we all serve on comp plan issues. But we don't all serve on our transportation-related planning. And recently, at the TPO meeting, there was a motion, and I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners to make sure I get it right, but there's been a discussion about having all of the Board of County Commissioner members, you know, serve on our Transportation Planning Agency.
Actually, the motion passed, and I actually signed it yesterday.
Yesterday. So there has been a motion where we all serve on land use, we all serve on comp planning, we all serve on EPC, but we don't all serve on our Transportation Planning Board. And the Transportation Planning Board actually did approve that motion. We did have some hesitancy by the airport, the port, and THIA, largely because they hadn't had a chance to really talk to their board about it. It sounded like they were willing as long as they didn't lose a vote at the table. And the planning agency does have the capacity for being able to add two board members. So I'm going to ask the staff to bring back to the next meeting what procedures or processes this board needs to do at the next board meeting to approve having the ability to have all seven board members serve on our Transportation Planning Agency, if that's an option.
I think what I signed from the TPO was the motion, I think, has to now go to the state. The governor, the cities and the governor have to approve it before it becomes reality. So we don't actually have the ability, the legal right yet, to put two more members on the TPO.
Okay, and we wouldn't do that until November, anyway.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised if it's done by then.
Okay, I would, too. I would, too, actually. But I would, you know, if there are steps that we need to do on our side or just indicate a letter of support, one or the other, to bring that back, I think it would be valuable to help understand that we do all serve on the comp plan, planning. We serve all on environmental protection. We all serve on the land use, but we don't all serve on our transportation planning. And I think having that consistency would really serve our residents and our businesses in an effective way. So if we would just bring that back when it's convenient, so. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Any other items? With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Oh, wait, 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 actually, sorry, don't go away. We had a person that came to speak on a consent item, who arrived just instantly after we had closed for a public comment. So I'm going to take the opportunity to bring back public comment, being is that we do offer that available when we do run out of time, and ask you to introduce yourself and please offer your public comment regarding A10, if I'm --
Yes. My name is Amy Trinos. I'm the president of the BAC. You have to forgive me, I'm not used to speaking in public. I'm the president of the BAC's Handicap for Parent Group, and I want to thank you for allowing our stables to be in existence. We have a very big impact, not only on the community here locally, but also in central Florida, nationally and internationally. And we just want to really tell you that we appreciate your support. We had some stuff going on as far as with some legal stuff, and we were able to work everything out and to give you some insight as far as what we do. The Senate BAC's Equestrian Center not only impacts our county, they also impact the immediate area through central Florida and nationally. As a stable, we're impacting through volunteers, through the Bright Futures High Schools, they come in and get the volunteer hours through us. We also educate future doctors from the USF who are going to be eventually serving our special needs population. We also have a lot of volunteers coming from the veterinarians as far as who's going to be serving some of our bigger agricultural and through Special Olympics. And with our programs and everything, not only do we provide lessons, but the volunteer group also provides social impacts beyond just our families. If our family is coming to a social event, for example, a holiday party or something like that, or if they live in a group home, everyone is welcome. So if we're having a holiday party and if we're giving out gifts, not only do we give out gifts to our writers, but we also give out gifts to the immediate siblings. And if they're in the group home, then the group home is more than welcome to be invited to the parties. And we also give out gifts to the residents of the group, which is very important because, like I said, it's a domino effect as far as where their area. And we are also a PATH certified organization, which is a national organization, and all of our instructors are PATH. Is somebody three minute?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here and being patient and waiting till the end of the meeting. I appreciate your comment.
And thank you for supporting us. I mean, it's very important for us, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you for coming down and bringing, highlighting that consent item. And it's a lovely place. BAC is a lovely, beautiful place that serves a huge, you know, area of all of Hillsborough County, really, and others still, with incredible services. It's a really very special place, and I'm really pleased that it's still there where it is and operating as it is. And I know that there are some struggles, but that you're over on the other side with it. And I loved hearing the story that you gave about how you celebrate, so, with all inclusiveness to families and siblings. So thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
And ma'am, before you go, I just also just want to say, as I'm sure you know, your item passed unanimously. All seven of us supported you. And I just want to ask our county administrator, Ms. Wise, if you can get this nice lady's contact information and get a member of your staff to get with her and help them to get up and running just as soon as possible now that they've been approved by the board.
And we would also like to invite each and every one of you out to come out and visit us at the stables. I think a couple of you have already done so, but if you have the opportunity, come out and visit us. You're going to be very impressed in what you see.
I look forward to that opportunity and bringing my grandson because he'll just love it, I'm sure, I'm sure. Thank you so much for being here today. Really appreciate it and looking forward to supporting your project and the whole effort that serves our community well. Are there any other items? So I'm safe to adjourn? All right, have a great day.